Yes, sir.
Can you call the meeting to order? Do the roll call.
I don't do that.
I could yell.
You can follow that.
Amy? Joe?
Here.
Yes. Me?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Jeff?
I'm here.
Is that new? Jason?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right. Sorry about that. I'm so used to you sitting down there.
I know.
Getting uncoordinated here. Um. We have the agenda. I need to hear if the agenda is good. Anybody has any problems with it? If not, I need to hear a motion to accept it.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
All right. Approval of the minutes. The motion will go up.
Yeah, we've been doing the motion.
Oh, yeah, all right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, she would say same side. There you go. So now we're down to approval of the minutes. Anything there?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. All right.
You got a dumb bat.
I get my no. I get to teach you. Um, reports and presentations, uh, chairperson, me, nothing. Village manager?
Uh, dredging work is underway on the river area. Uh, they began last week. They're running twenty-four five, as I understand it, so they take weekends off. A lot of Texas roadhouse, we stand by. Uh, working from the south going north. Finally, hopefully, we got some rain. The river was actually pretty low to the point where the barge got stuck. Getting up to that point, um, just on how low it had been based on the dryness of the area. Uh, we're pumping the slurry waste up to Lucky Robinson's property. There's a giant containment cell that's been built over there, so the sludge slurry gets pumped there, it settles, it did waters and the water goes back into the river and comes back down into the project area. So they anticipate, um, it taking five to six weeks roughly from start to to conclusion, so that gets us really tight up towards that October fifteenth deadline, which is based on the permit for the project from the state, so you can't do work in the water after that date. And we also are permitted then to begin the drawdown of the lake on October fifteenth, so um, should be going smoothly, I would think, and and be done by then. Um. We've received the, uh, the invoices from them, so I know they're they're doing some work and uh, thankfully, we have the tax revenue to pay for those, so. Um, if not, we we did talk about this because one of the things that uh, this turned out to be about a half million dollar project and um, we had, we had money banked away from last year that we were obviously matching with the tax capture that's on the tax bills that went out July first. Well, those aren't due until September fifteenth. And typically by September fifteenth, actually by the end of September, we're about ninety-two, ninety-three percent collection historically. Um. So Lake Committee and the Village Council have talked, and you know, if in the odd chance that that number lags for whatever reason, uh, the general fund would loan money to the project to be repaid. Um, we already set up the policy to do it. Um. So no issues on that end. Um. Year end number, we we certainly have enough money come in through the tax session, pay for everything. It's just that liquidity factor of when those invoices come in, based on when those tax dollars come in. And a lot of that is due to, you know, like the big companies, one CoreLogic or those others sending in that big disbursement that's got three hundred, you know, mortgages on it that they've asked for. Um. Sometimes that hits in August, sometimes that hits in September, so. But all projects, I think, going pretty smoothly. Um.
How how do they, so so with the invoicing? How do they, just curious, how do they invoice that? How is that? How how is that, um, invoiced in? In yardage?
No, so the contract that we set had specific dollar amounts of specific dates. Based on their project completion schedules.
So much.
Okay.
Per, yeah.
Right.
Or per job, we're part of that. So there was money upfront for the mobilization, money upfront for the construction of the holding cell. You know, paying incrementally for each phase of the project as it gets completed, so. The three invoices we have, the third one isn't actually technically due until September twenty-fifth is the invoice date on that, so.
So. How do they keep? And how how was? How was it, uh, enforced as the proper yardage for the the amount of so projected? So ta- taken out? I mean, we got, you you gotta
Yeah.
You 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 got a retention pond, right? But how was it figured of, yes, the proper amount was taken out? Was there a graph done or was there?
So the the way the the whole system works, start to finish, is when you apply for your permit, you identify the area. You identify your depth, you calculate the the yardage there. On the backend, you build a containment cell to hold the quantity that your permit essentially allows. So with a little bit of extra leeway, you know, for some of that will settle. So realistically, your answer is when the holding cell is full, you've reached your permitted capacity.
And that's solids, or is that with liquid too?
That's when it's solid. So as it drains, it'll compact, that kind of stuff, so.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Well, assuming they're just taking the stuff that takes them down back to the original riverbed.
Correct.
You're not going to keep it, just like what we did.
Yes.
Here, we only took out back down.
I didn't know if that was done, like there was a a a somebody came in and did a a graph on the
No.
on the bed.
Nope.
Say, oh, there was this much, or how they calculated that
Nope.
that fourteen thousand yardage or twelve.
No, because the the permit doesn't say this dry or wet quantity. It says you're allowed to take this amount of quantity. So that that is a huge point of debate within the larger dredging community, because it's not specified on the state permit as whether it's dry or wet at the end of the day. So at the end of the day, your holding cell can hold a dry quantity of what your permit allows. It is how the it's been set up, so.
I'll be curious to see after the project, um, the river ends flowing faster. And if it does, how would that affect any of the salt? Downriver from what they're doing in the project itself, you know.
As soon as the waters as as soon as the waters.
Yeah, you'll die on the week.
True, you should be able to see it. I mean, you're gonna see whether it that it was done right or not.
Yeah, I'd say let's next spring when the water comes back up and all that stuff and that river really starts to flow again, if it's a bad enough flow, it's gonna influence stuff down.
Project. Yeah, and when and when saving is done, there's some some other work that the village and the association are gonna do together. So that dredging machine stays roughly about ten feet away from the bank. And in Riviera Park, you have a a concrete seawall. So they don't want to run that machine up tight to that because that could really end up resulting in the that seawall losing its stability and collapsing because it loses that weight pulling it in on the water side, essentially.
Isn't that the riverside though?
The riverside, yeah.
But the the original riverside, isn't that?
No, it's on the other side of the channel.
Okay.
Yeah, we're 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 working on the non-original channel side right now. I mean, we are, I'm sorry. The original river channel, the way it is flowing now, though, is the other way. So it goes on the west side of the island. The original channel is the east side.
Is the east side, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so we're gonna come back in with our backhoe. We we just bought, it was delivered last week, a forty-eight inch ditching bucket. We can just come in and scoop and level that up to that seawall. So you'd be able to then dock it in, because if you're staying with a barge ten feet away and you're allowing for slumpage of that spoil, you're you're gonna have, you know, it's still higher at the seawall and come down, so if we can clean that up, so it's more of a
We, the village?
We, the village and the association, we're we're working together to do it, yeah, so.
Costs a lot of money that way.
Yeah.
Because we have our own labor guy doing that kind of work.
Definitely.
And they're gonna pay you, but just instead of all these guys.
Yeah.
So, okay, a cost, these will get to me, we'll use the town and the team, but I like the idea of us doing it.
Yeah, if he's
Yep.
a qualified operator.
Right, just like snowflower and stuff like that. We do some of the snowflower to help save.
Yep.
Some of our billing too, so I appreciate having them.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
So we had our first handful of shifts with Mount Pleasant Police Department over Labor Day weekend. We have another four this month and six in October scheduled. Uh, four hour shifts. Varying days of the week, time of day, some are overnight, some are early in the morning, some are midday. On that first wave, we really wanted to target a a time when they would be very visible. A lot of people, daylight hours, just so people could get familiar. Again, we'll see a police presence out here in some capacity. Um. At the dailies, they did a lot of, uh, educational staffs, particularly on Sunday, that, you know, like you're there is a speed limit here and it's not fifty-five, like, slow down. Um. But we are gonna migrate that more into some of those off-hours into the evening and mornings as we go forward. Um. But all all good feedback in there. We did add on our webpage, um, a page that talks about public safety services in the community. So if you visit our webpage, you under services. Public Safety Services. Uh, we added you know, we talked about our fire department, and we also included a link here if you're interested in being a firefighter, because they're always looking for additional people.
Sure.
You can click here, it'll take you to their website where they have that application. Uh, we talked about our relationship with Mount Pleasant Police Department, and you can visit their website if you need any additional information on their department. Our relationship with the Sheriff's Department, particularly the Lake Patrols. Then obviously the link where you can go to sign up for the Smart nine-one-one in Isabella County, which is a program where uh, fill out a a questionnaire with them. That answers important questions the dispatch will have for first responders, like do you take medication, what allergies you have, those type of things, so. In the event there is some type of emergency response needed to your your location, they're gonna know this person's on blood dinners, this person's on whatever, so that they can render more competent aid at a time and manner. Uh, we are taking bids right now to replace the sign at our DPW property out there, uh, with one that would have a digital marquee. Uh, we sent, uh, proposals out to eight different companies. Uh, first one I heard back from wasn't one that we sent to out of Louisville, Kentucky.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I know. Uh.
What's the digital marquee for?
So we can do messages. Yeah, messages. Yep. And we had planned to do this, um, and originally as part of our budget year. And then earlier, actually late last month, uh, there was a training day that went pretty much all day at the Emergency Operations Center over at the county. On the, where the State Police Post is. And it was to work through scenarios for the dam. Specifically putting, you know, to practice the emergency action plan, who calls who, you know? What happens if you see this, that type of stuff? And one of the things that um, we spent a significant time talking about was you know, where are we gonna be able to stage assets to address a a potential dam failure or something like that? Not not that there is anything concerning with our dam. There, let's play, is perfectly fine, passes all the inspections. But God forbid something were to happen, um, you know, because that's gonna take out the bridge at Coldwater Road at the end, so and that that impacts where you respond from, because your fire department is on that side.
And.
Our DPW is on this side, the Road Commission Garage is on that side, so, you know, how do we get these assets in the right places at the right time? And one of the things that we talked about definitely needing to be able to do was have a way to close down Coldwater Road in a way that people you know, can't drive towards, you know, that location and so having a digital sign there that I could edit from my phone says, you know, potential dam failure, whatever, you know? That would be an easier way to at least message at that point and not have to develop belt time or resources to go there to put letters up on the marquee and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, this is another practical application for that that came up after the fact. Um, but it'd be more so for, you know, trick treating hours, meeting times, meeting dates, you know, remember garbage, you know? Christmas tree picked up, if you want us to pick up your Christmas trees, that type of stuff, so. Um, just just another way to try and improve our messaging. Uh, we are currently also, uh, soliciting proposals for our banking services. We have been with Isabella Bank, uh, primarily since we incorporated nineteen ninety-eight. We did for a while have uh, an account at First Bank, and currently right now we do have an account with Merkenpile. But primarily, we've been with Isabella Bank, so we're looking to add um, reevaluating all that to see if going with one exclusively would be more advantageous. Um.
I actually see you on that list?
No, they're not.
Okay.
They do not offer the services that we want. Um, when it came down to particularly on the investment end for us, um. You know, they they certainly don't have the suite of options that we really wanna, you know, that we can be in. And then it came down to really all the other ones in our area are single branch, it's like there's one fifth or there's one, you know, so it's like you know, I, we don't want to be in you know, with a one institution that's got one location in the area and then they close up shop in
Right.
your nearest branch offices.
Another city.
Another city way, you know? So really, when it came down to it is developing and Merkenpile, the only two that made any practical sense for us to consider. Um. We had a community Q and A last night here for the Cityhood topic. We have another one scheduled for Sun, Saturday, Saturday at ten AM, getting more football.
Yep.
Um. And then the council will consider it again and probably make a decision on whether or not we're gonna move forward at their meeting on September twenty-third. At that meeting, we're gonna introduce an amendment to our trash, uh, franchise ordinance. Because we are looking to do a five-year renewal with Kings. And right now the ordinance doesn't allow for five, it only allows for three, two or three. I'll have to amend the ordinance and take care of all that in one fell swoop in October. But locking in the current rates for that period of time, uh, so. All in all, things are plugging along here. Tax season is wrapping up. The due due date is the fifteenth, which is Monday, I believe, next Monday. For take.
Any other speculation with Kings and whether prices are gonna increase?
Just said locking in the current prices.
Earlier.
Yeah.
Wow, I was, I would expect them to go up just like everything else, but.
So.
You know.
We put out that that they can, sure, you know, but the initial rates aren't gonna change, so, you know? Which we, um, in going to that five year, the current agreement theoretically would allow them to go up to five percent annually.
Okay.
So during the five years, we got them down to three percent as a as a, an increased max, you know, so.
Fifteen percent over the five year.
Yeah.
I have to.
Yeah, so.
Still not bad.
Good rate.
Yep.
I'll I'll do the city thing, uh, the meeting, go.
You know, last night, yeah, we've we've had five probably now at this point in time, if you count the council meetings, give or take. Um. You know, I think it went well. There's certainly a lot of really crazy misinformation out there, uh, on some stuff, but um, you know, we we answer all the questions as truthfully we can and um, you know, some people literally just cannot get past the idea that you know, this isn't going to be more government, bigger government or more taxes despite what we we present to them and you know, it's like, well, we're gonna have to pay a mayor's salary and a mayor's retirement and like, no, no, you're not, like how much are all these people and all these boards gonna make? I'm like, they make like twenty-five bucks right now, like.
If they even collect.
Yeah. So.
How it turned out till last night?
It was full last night.
Really?
Yeah.
It was full. Wow, new people?
No. No, and and that's what i- is a little frustrating is the the room was full and there were people who had been here at previous meetings who were you know. Had questions that they were asking that they asked the same questions again and still don't believe the answer that was told to them
Okay.
at the meeting. It's like I I I'm gonna tell you the same thing, no matter how many times you come here and ask the question, if it's the truth. So.
Well, we had a good turnout relation.
Well, we'll just see how Saturday goes, because the only one so far that really wasn't well attended was the one we did during the week during the day.
Yep.
Eleven AM block, so.
It was a perk.
But you know, I hear the opposite of that, like, I, you know, I can't come to evening meetings or whatever.
Yep.
So it's like, well, we'll give you the option to come during the day, like. So.
Saturday should also be a good turnout then, so.
We'll see.
Question back on the police. Um, did they give out speeding ticket? I don't know if they had somebody next door said they were handing them out.
So they're probably more.
Um. Where do they do that? Do they get, go to Mount Pleasant, go to the county?
Yeah.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with us, there's no.
We set the speed limit.
Right.
Yeah, for our roads, the county does for theirs, but yeah, and that's that's built into our agreement that, you know, if they write the tickets they're getting the the ticket revenue because they're writing on our state law, but at the same time, they're not billing us for court if they have to go to court to defend it, so.
Could we get something like that on our on our sheet here, so that we can see what they've been doing? To enforcement cases and stuff?
Yeah, I've shared that with the council.
I have to share with the council?
No, I've shared it with the council.
Oh, and and they said.
Share the dailies with the council, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's the code enforcement report, that's not the police report, so.
Right.
Yeah.
We should put another section down at the bottom, updated police report.
Like I said, I've shared that with the council and share with them as it comes in.
It'll be in compliments anyways, right?
As far as, or the attachment as part of the council agenda?
Not the dailies or not, no.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if you did or not.
As far as if it's making a difference, or?
We, I I I asked them, how can I present this data, you know, like, is there a way for me to you know, spreadsheet it out, you know, number stops, that kind of stuff, so. That's what we're gonna work on, is taking that daily data and doing that.
Okay.
You know, um. So.
I'd I agree, I would like to see some of that data itself on that.
Yeah.
It should be public information, I don't see any way, it doesn't have to be confidential or anything, so.
Anything else? Village manager, uh, village council?
You, Joe?
One thing I need to do, Joe? Uh, nothing that, uh, he hasn't covered yet.
The council truly didn't meet last month other than to do a a Q and A type meeting, so, um, they will be meeting on the twenty-third with you know, Community potatoes actually on the agenda this month, so. We're looking at, uh, developing an internship program. Um, we've got the, hopefully the sign bid, the banking bids won't be until afterwards. Such like that.
Yeah, the the managers report that he does is probably more thorough than I can relate to you guys, so. Not, not that I don't want to share.
Put you on the spot.
No, I'm I'm fine with that, but you know. Kudos to Tim, he does an excellent job, you know?
Okay, there are no public hearings, uh, open for public comment? Nobody stares at you.
What you have to say, buddy? No, just kidding.
Anybody on?
We'll go after you here.
Or anything?
If they're online?
That, no.
PJ? Uh, existing business, the master plan update draft.
Yeah, well. I'm gonna try and wordsmith this as we go, if there's stuff that we need to change in that. I don't know how you guys want to go through it, just that way. Leo did a write-up.
Yeah.
I'm good with the guts. The top of that. Sure, go ahead.
I did a write-up. I don't think I was. Kind of review, kind of get the summaries of what that draft said. And they leave some comments in there of when they such as, um one lady says you can build so many houses uh, at this price range. You can build, uh, what was it, thirty-five houses or something like that?
Yeah.
At three hundred thousand, then you might have fifteen thousand, uh, houses at four hundred plus. But you can build fifty, and that that didn't count for this, so I assume the rest was lower income. And she got that by just saying, well that's normal. But you're forgetting local demographics, how many people really want to build today at the Boston building? All right, and with the rates, all right? And unless you can make it affordable, what market are you trying to attract? I'll put it that way. All right? Uh, starter homes? All right? Uh, that's one thing, or you mentioned senior housing. Well low income and senior in that report. Both in my opinion, both of those segments require different amenities. Low income they don't have travel, they don't, they need some other help with assistance. For shopping and travel and healthcare, things of that nature. Senior housing, like senior developments typically when they're housed together, they want more of a clubhouse and more amenities, you know, to bring it together. So unless you want to build a clubhouse and amenities, such as pickleball courts, bocce ball courts, or something of that nature, or they can meet for coffee, and they can meet just get together and have different events sponsored. That's gonna take a lot more money from the village or somebody initial overhead to build.
Wouldn't that be the developer? So wouldn't he be responsible for that, like the airport properties? He says, okay, that didn't go through, they're not gonna accept it, we're gonna put it up for dibs or something. And the guy says, well, I want to come in and build a a a group of duplexes. We got the water, the little little pond here, we can put a path around, and we got all that type of stuff, so the developer should be the one to get them in with all of that kind of.
What what location would you pick? For that?
That is airport.
Okay.
If it if it were to.
If if assuming I put in here that assuming we don't know until the end of the year whether people are gonna take it over.
Right, yep.
All right, it's kind of hard today to make a decision what you want to do till we find out what's gonna happen. But a developer can, but they're gonna need to have we need to do a little bit, the gist of this is I think we need to do a little bit more marketing for the dealer. Okay? We're relying on people that own lots, do they want to keep a lot for investment? Do they eventually want to build? The only real lots that are visible that can be marketed are the ones that the village owns. Well we have the ability, I guess is what I'm saying, to see what kind of development you want helps spur that growth. All right, the rest, we're just waiting on people. I mean, all the lots, I don't know how many other lots are vacant, they're not owned around the development.
Right.
And 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 what do they want to do it, you know, are someone gonna come up to your lot and say, hey, you know, want this vacant lot, you want to sell it, I want to build? All right? I don't know if they're waiting for that. They or can we spur something? And
In the past in planning commission and council, since I've been on both, there have been plenty of times we've talked about a community center. With, we were all big idea, you know, a pool for swimming and all that stuff, a workout room, a place for seniors to gather, play play poker, drink coffee, you do that stuff, but at one time, well, before we did this building here, we had talked about having the village office as part of that community centers, if they had folks, we'd do that, and we had already talked about the five acres up on Stureroe. Because they're more or less the center for people to get to both ways. I'd still love.
Which has to, you know, you're talking, you're talking coming down to money, which I think we talked about before. Is the way the taxes are right now, we can't even afford to upkeep our roads.
Right.
So how you even bring that in there? I mean, we we have a system that's been depleted and not maintained for quite some time.
Yeah.
And now we're, now we're throwing it on the folks right now to try to just keep it and and better. And i- it's a big throw on, though.
But I think for developers to come in, like, they'll have to come in and build a similar committee. Only I'm taking them because they've been massive in in bigger metropolitan areas, because they can build on larger scale. You know, it'd be very hard to come in and say, okay, I can build all this, like with this, a construction industry, how much are you gonna have into that one building and the amenities? They don't put houses around it. All the infrastructure do that, how much are you gonna charge for some type of overhead, for its maintenance and operation? And then what kind of, given the cost to build the structure? All right, market it, sell it, have it occupy, then have those people if they need a mortgage or if they need, you know, if they, if you cash it out, I don't know, I put an example of what I did and for like a hundred and fifty thousand, a low lend. All right, figure what it is per thousand on a payment for thirty years. All right, figure what it is per thousand on a payment for thirty years. I did a six point three, what did you say, six point, six dollars and twenty-nine cents a month, and it's all there, all right? Now, also about five dollars and twenty-five cents. Per thousand for homeowners coverage, depending on, depending on agents, depending whether you have boats, you have a high personal property. There's a lot of variables in there, but that's been pretty much on the building and some, some standard coverage, okay? Take thirty mils, and, and assuming taxable value is fifty percent of what the building goes for. And I said, if that's a hundred and fifty, so your taxable value is seventy-five. Seventy-five thousand and thirty turns out to be like one and a half percent of its real value. So when you start adding all those figures up.
Which I think you're pretty low on that number.
Uh, but I'm going, this is on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
That turned out to be a thousand dollars a month.
Thousand and one eighty-one.
I did a hundred and twenty thousand dollar mortgage, twenty percent down, no private mortgage insured. It's gotta be added on that, make less than a twenty percent down payment, that just raises the payment up, and that's gonna be until. One of two things, you pay it down to eighty percent, or the value goes up. Based on current appraisal, and you're at seventy-five percent of value based on appraisal. So that private mortgage insurance is gonna stay there for a long time. All right, now, it brings in a, a quandary for the person, because if you put a ten percent down payment. Great, start a home, if something happens in your life that you have to transfer. Try to sell a home with a ninety percent mortgage and come out with any. You're gonna pay seven percent for commission. Another two percent. Title insurance, you name it, all the other stuff that goes with it. So after they put all their money in it, they're coming out with a wash. All right, unless that thing was away. So I was trying to get an idea, when I went out and drove around Liberia and some of the other roads. Someone wanted to buy one of the lots, lot X, on the foot that, I don't know where lot X is on that road. I could look on a plan. But I don't know if what I'm looking at in this wood, this picture, is that this lot? But I don't wanna cost a lot of money, but. Flag each line, I mean. But, but you, we've gotta do something to try to help. Market with the realtors, market with the home builders association, do something to get more interest out here, that's the only area.
Now, we're discussing the lots of the town spines up here on the north side of.
Right, they could go the north, yeah.
I'm just making sure I've understood.
Right, because at this point, you could go out and find that, I'd like this lot. But I don't know, excuse my language, I don't know what the heck the lot is, which lot is it? To buy.
It's been done.
Well.
I've looked around for a lot of lots too, and I've been able to find a lot of them G I S. Looking that stuff up, but I'm going by either a lot number on the advertisement, like the realtor site or whatever, lot sixty-five, lot sixty-six, you know, for those.
I've gotta find that out.
Right, exactly, so.
That was really, you left it aside.
Because somehow the G I S is not a hundred percent accurate.
Right, no, but at least I can find where it's at.
Yeah, yes, but I think the, my, the whole point of this is trying to figure out how to market, is. The lady that did the study, she said, you can build these three, four hundred thousand dollar homes, where she's getting, where, there was no. Mentioned where these people are gonna come from. Where can you go to market these people?
Well, well, how do you, how do you market low income? At, at a, in a village? That you're low income, getting, getting taxed twice. And you have a lake, I mean, really, really low income in.
That's what I say, I don't think.
Yeah, that's, that's not realistic solution.
Realistic is not, is loose, if you want to go with a starter home. I mean, for young professionals, I mean, I, I would go that, elevate that beyond low income.
Yeah.
All right, and right in August, you really wanna have a developer, and I'm not sure they're gonna be standing in line to put in a senior housing development. All right, given their cost, and their, and their absorption, how many people wanna come out here and live over by the airport, I mean.
They may not, they may not do a senior. A, a, a group of duplexes, like over there, if, if they can still get access to the lake. Which they can with Lipo, and maybe you have to work something else out there. Then the duplexes don't have to be for five hundred thousand dollars, plus if you've got a park there.
They could do, you know, fifty-five plus, like river bluffs and no plus, and something like that.
It's, I agree.
But it doesn't have to be either one of those.
But how are you, how are you going to attract these people?
That's the developer, you gotta sell the developer, then he's gonna attract.
That's my point, I'm not trying to get to the people, it's. How do we get to these developers in the area? What kind of marketing are, where are we reaching out to any of these people?
Well, I'm not sure we can until we decide what we wanna do.
You know, last night I heard from a couple of people that they want everything in writing, we don't do anything online, and you're horrible people because. You expect us to use technology to find out what's going on in the world, you know, it's like. Um, we are a community that is in the redevelopment ready program through the M E D C, we are certified at the essential level. Um, one of the plans that you have to adopt to go to the certified level, which is the next level, which we're not actively pursuing, would be a marketing plan, but. You're also eligible, uh, last time I checked, to receive grant funding to cover half of that cost to do a plan like that, so. Um, their, their library on their, on the website has examples, so here's like Vassar's marketing plan, and that covers, you know. A whole lot of topics, like, you know, they look at your website, they look at print media, social media, um. You know, come up with where to focus, what messages you wanna focus in that marketing to, to your people and to attract. Um, what are key strategies, your core audience, core messages, um, those type of things, and. Um, so I think that would certainly be. A goal to put in the plan as terms of the next plan we wanna knock out is a marketing plan. It, it is because that, that I think is essential to realize what, you know, we've been talking about tonight in terms of. Making sure that the, the data from the T M A doesn't go stale, and that it's used to attract. You know, demographics that, that are attracted to our community, you know? So.
I think with also health, if. Either agents of. Rule that. We're going to keep up with, we're able to keep up with what we have. Whether it's a developer. Or, or people that come, and they, they talk, they talk to other people.
You know.
And whether it's the lake itself. Of. Honestly, the upkeep, we're, we're in the process now of making it better, right?
Mm-hmm.
But the, the lack thereof in the past, now we're trying to. Take care of a lot of that now. So, yeah, that the set aside, you know, no, the same thing with some of these. These rooms, roads that are not main roads. That you end up and get, get concerned saying, okay. When are these ever gonna get done? Is this a one and, one and done kind of thing, and then am I gonna, you know, I purchase. A lot and put up half a million dollar house on. Is this road gonna never get done and just crumble? You know, certain, certain things that we. That I don't know the whole answers to, but the, that we can't handle right now.
I just think we should at least try to, uh, reach out, maybe the home builders or the realtors, try to get a feedback, what they're seeing in buyers.
I would say that, that would be a good idea.
That's what I said, in, someone in marketing, trying to reach out, get a feedback from them and say, okay, what are you seeing? What, where are you seeing the wealth, where, where is it happening? We have different lots available to meet these needs. All right, do you find that? Uh, you know, if, if you find in their work, that a certain segment is, is booming, can we serve that?
And part of that's with that, that survey thing that was done, kinda telling you the age and everything, that people. The people that are buying, right? But I don't think it would hurt going from, like, the realtors.
I don't know if we need a council approval to do that, or, um, possibility, but I think somehow. The voters should at least reach out to these people and at least get feedback and report.
Getting back to the roads, though. In my mind, the number one responsibility of the village. We maintain our roads.
The number one.
My mind, the number one, it may be number two, but number one in my mind right now is our responsibility to take care of the roads.
There's a lot of pavement out here.
I'm going twenty-seven miles, lower than most other places.
Twenty-six and a half.
Right, so, I mean, we haven't done any major, major stuff like we did back in two thousand two.
Seven, seven electric project.
That, but that was the.
Local street special assessment.
Okay, I would think in the majors were first, then we did the great, so really, if you were, if you lived here prior to two thousand three. The roads hadn't been touched in thirty-plus years, they were, or.
El Camino Grande was known as the Ho Chi Minh Trail.
Right, it was half paved and half dirt, and I purposely went off the dirt road and rounded down, that's how bad that road was, I wouldn't drive down, I knew by Jeep. So we made a huge improvement, but that took special assessments, it took a ten meter bond. For us to do, it was a headache, because we had a lot of people fighting us against it, you know, saying that they didn't wanna spend that kind of money, but. You know, luckily, it overall finally ended up going through, and I think the major factor for that part is the local streets will give them the choice.
So well, then after that bond, it just kinda fizzled out, there was, there was never, uh. Uh, uh, thought of continuing a bond and to be able to take care of more of the major.
You can't special assess for maintenance, you can only special assess for capital improvement.
Right. And he's done one.
So the issue there became, you would have to do a voter approved initiative at that point in time to fund it beyond what you're currently getting. And this gets back to the, the disparity in the two networks that we talked about during the cityhood presentations on this, is that. We get enough money realistically to maintain our major street network.
Right.
You know, we, we, we can functionally make that work. At, at thirty-six grand a mile, you know, it's tight, but, you know, we, we can make that work. The eighteen and a half miles of local street that we get a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars a year for, or seven, five hundred dollars a, a mile. We can't do anything with, and so if you go to a village component. And say, village of Lake Isabella property owner, we want you to pay two mils for roads, or one mil for roads, or whatever it is. I live on a major street, where's my incentive to vote for that if the village has the money to maintain the street in front of my house? No offense, it's not my problem that you live on a local street, you know?
Right, but people that live on the local street.
Yeah.
Expect the village to, to take care.
How do, how do we do that in an equitable way so that you, as, as a resident, are getting that full dollar back that you're paying in for your taxes? Because otherwise, we're essentially diverting money away from, you know, the, the seven and a half miles of major street property owners to invest it. In the local streets, and that's, that's really not an equitable solution, which is why the special assessment process. Made sense is that you are directly paying for the road in front of your house, you're not paying for anybody else's road, so.
And that should be within each yourself, when I was involved in doing all that, because we gave each local street the ability to say no. So if you got more than fifty percent of the owners of those lots on that street say, no, we didn't pave the street.
And Mike, Mike lives on a private street, so why is he gonna vote for either of that?
Wait, what, four, four streets if I'm not thinking that, you chose not to do it.
Uh, well, you, once you get the same. Backlash when you say, okay, I've, I got a special assessment, and I'm gonna pay for the street that I'm on. Yet, the people on Queensway and, and Al Camino, I'm helping pay for their road too.
We, we did, and the way we did that too is we actually divided it down into five separate costs. Based on if it was a vacant lot, if it was a lot that was unbuildable because of well stuff and something. Whether you were on a local street, whether you were on a major street. There's one more at the beginning, but you went anywhere from a hundred and fifty dollars to help improve that local street up to a thousand dollars per lot. So, you know, if you own multiple lots, it was a thousand dollars per lot, but that was the money was all gathered to take care of all the local streets that I went here to say, yes, we want.
Yeah, I'm talking about the major.
Okay.
Before that, I'm paying, I'm paying for. For, for a major road.
Yep.
That.
That you gotta drive out to get to your local.
I, I have to, I have to use.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I was asking about the people. Right, I mean, that, that would be a legitimate, legitimate for.
And when we did the assessments, so, back, you know, the last assessment that we did was oh seven, so there was this wave from two thousand and three to oh seven. Where we did a significant amount of paving through the special assessment process. Your property values were much more condensed, now they're, they've spread out significantly in terms of. The home prices and, and so on and so forth, where. You know, everyone paid the same amount, no matter what is your house, what's your property value? Um, so, i- i- if you look at that option again, those are questions that I think realistically has to be relooked at from a policy standpoint, is. Is that per lot basis the right way? Is it a footage basis? Is it a, a valuation basis? Because, you know, the argument can be made that you're going to reap a higher benefit to maintain your, your home property value than your vacant lot property value, the, you know. I, I just agree to that, but.
What was special assessment, we were able to special assess all lot.
Yep.
Was did anybody live there or not? You do it to a village. Now you're only getting the people that get the vote on it, or only the people that actually live here, if you own an empty lot, sorry, you get no vote. I didn't like that personally, I mean, special assessment to me is the way to go, because I think it's gonna be more.
The long special assessment, people that don't have, um, homestead, do they get the vote on that?
Property, it's property, yeah, so all the, all these are the, the big questions that the council had to go through, I'm not saying. I'm telling you what the, the policies that they would have to weigh in twenty twenty-five at this discussion, and that is one of them that. You know, at the time in two thousand three, we were probably. Sixty-five, seventy percent of our. Homes were year round, I would say, we're, we're over eighty now, easy. Um, and a lot less vacant property, so, you know, how does that turn to an equitable policy to come forward? Is it just the voters who are registered voters in Lake Isabella do this, or? You own a vacant piece of property, I own a house next to it on one lot, Jeff owns a house on two lots. You know, he gets two votes, you and I each get one, because we each have that number of lots in, on that street that are gonna be paved. And if it goes through, I pay fifteen, you pay fifteen, and he pays three, you know, that, that's how it worked, so.
But with a special assessment, we could, we could determine the pricing with the village vote, you can't. The village on the house that you own, or the village on that lot determines how much you pay, well. If you got a half a million dollar house here, a quarter of a million dollar house right next door to them, why do they have to pay?
More.
Two different prices to use the same road.
Let's understand.
Everybody else uses it, that's, that was one of my biggest selling points when we wanted to do the special assessment, is try to make it more even for everybody.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm, you know, not ready for, yes, I'm telling you what the, the policy discussions are, and. You know, you do have elected officials, one at our table tonight, that, you know, do have to weigh those type of decisions where. You know, is the equitable answer the ballot box always, so it's the voters who choose to show up to vote, or is it? A process where everyone on the street gets an equal say, whether they opt in or out, you know? But at the end of the day, you don't have that comfort of saying, well, the voters approve this, because ultimately the council will be the one that approved that, so. You know, you have, there are members of the council that are fundamentally opposed to levying that without voter approval.
Question back where we're talking about multiple units, you know, um, we obviously don't wanna go through all the hassle, but septic system and.
Yep.
Is the one that we have out there, is that, can you still get something like that approved if you did something over here and put out seven or eight of them?
Yeah.
So that could be a selling point to.
Yeah, developer could do something.
Right, right, so that's an option, rather have to dig one.
The village is very adamant, we went to court to say that we are not responsible for that sewer system.
Yes.
I know, I've heard that before, we haven't called on you.
No, no, you have not. That's why we have all right.
I just talked to you about the road, but.
There are a lot of things that have changed from two thousand to two thousand twenty-five, it's huge for those who've been around. Over that timeframe, both living here and or serving, and I'm planning or.
There's the dark case right there, Lake, versus Lake Isabella.
Um, you know. When you're talking about going out and selling this to them, that might be a strong selling point that. You know, we've got one already up and running. So if they wanna build multiple units, they may not have to do all of them, just put a grinder system in and go like that. And that might be a positive to if you said, well, each house you gotta put a system in and do all of that, just don't put a well in. That way we won't have to, we won't have to answer the question about, well, I'll do it if you put in a sewer system.
Yeah.
So there.
I still not agree with you, Leo, but there's. Certain amount of stuff that we can do to make. More appealing, or as much appealing as we can for people to move out here. And I, I still think you're right in the sense of low income and the senior parts, I think are the places to start, because I've heard. Multiple people over the years asking for those services, especially the retirement side of things. You know, I don't have a, I'm on a five thousand square foot house right now, I'm retiring. It's just my wife and I, we don't wanna maintain this five thousand square foot house anymore, but we don't wanna be like, well, I don't have a place to go and. You know, retire to or do something like that.
Right. Square foot homes, but all in, from what I've heard, and, and people say, that's all I need.
Mm-hmm.
I'm once more maybe with a basement. I'm once in a while maybe with a basement, um, you can have it handicap assessed, I mean, you'll see in a living of that nature.
Yeah.
Or you can try to get starter homes for young families. You gotta be careful with kids. Because of a limited amount of daycare. Uh, abilities that we have here. Uh, and the biggest problem is our deployments to the east and the schools are to the west.
Yeah.
And unless you can home and the kids are old enough, you're not gonna send a seven year old kid on a bus and be home by themselves. You know.
Did when I was a kid.
Things have changed just a little bit, but I mean, that's what that's where the problem is. You get kids out, people that have young kids, they stay for three or four, five years and they move back. That has happened. Multiple times, because they just can't. They can't get out of work and take that driving back and forth. Two days a week I pick up my grandkids because my daughter and son-in-law can't get away from the office. I got a ten year old. I have one that's older, but if she's tied up in sports, I'm not gonna put the ten year old on a bus and go home by herself.
No, I feel like.
All right.
I'm going next week, my mom's gotta come up pick the kids up from school. And what it is.
And they live in Mount Pleasant, but that's that's just the way it is. And I don't wanna exacerbate it, move out here and. You know, Beale City is great, but it's still school of choice. You gotta pick up and deliver. They don't have buster.
That's a challenge if we go low income though too.
Oh, yeah, not. I'd rather have someone else come in to the city, Village of Wademan. All right, and build an apartment complex there if they wanna. Put into a low income area.
Yes.
Like, let let them do it there.
Yep.
Okay. I don't want that mis construed.
Right.
That would be there closer to shopping. They got a grocery store, they got a pharmacy in the grocery store, they got an elementary school there. And then they got busing.
And two dollar stores.
So.
Which carried more than the grocery store.
They're within walking distance, easy. So there, the the services there outpace what we can offer.
Yeah, Wademan presents a much more walkable solution that is not.
All right, I think a developer would be better suited to develop it there.
Yeah.
And I don't think the low incomes heat bringing in here is gonna benefit any type of growth. For anything. As for the village as far as. It, any type of growth, um. Stop, you know, to bring bring anything in here. Because it would cost.
But we still have to have some availability for it because. You know, that's may there happen everywhere, so.
Our duty to market to that. I think our, you know, the low end of where we should be working in terms of development would be getting. Start starters back home, back into our market.
We we've had some discussions on our meetings about that recently.
All comes into your um goals, your general goals and your neighborhood goals. If you read that in this draft. It sounds like Equal Housing Opportunity Act. Everybody is welcome, but it includes low income housing. In the goals, you stated that. It would be very hard for us if you want government grants or money if you start tearing this thing apart. And restricting it. Well, you're not equal uh opportunity for housing, all right? I'd leave it there, just don't promote it.
Well, I mean.
Right.
A- any house can be considered low income houses as far as that goes, as far as the the equal housing opportunity. If we wanted to rent out their home, uh, if they rented it, you know, to do. Whether it was through like section eight, for instance, if it approved section eight, that that's a low income home.
Right.
We don't have to build or have a apartment complex that came strictly to, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
My points are bringing up what is already in the goals.
Yeah, the the.
And that you have to keep that in mind, all right? Whether you promote it or really, let's go out and really push this, you know, you don't have to do that.
Right.
But it's best to keep them here, but un- understand that what we're really trying to attract is maybe something. In in a quarter million, three hundred thousand dollar, if if you if you can get that, all right? You know, on up, all right? Um, no, that could be for people selling their homes and wanna move out here and 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 build and retire. People that are gonna downsize, well, people out of the area, or how many people have we moved in? That may not even live in Isabella County or or in the local area. Okay, there's coming from all ports of the state and even out of state. Michigan is becoming a destination state if you got water. It is. We just gotta bring that up and somehow use that to our advantage.
I guess that's what I was I was getting at with the low income, not necessarily, not, you know. Trying to divert it or whatever, but at the same time. It's a destination area with a lake. You don't go to a. You you don't go to a village, a town, a city. Where there's a lake to look. For low income housing, because it's not there.
That that's right. I agree. That's not what I'm, what I'm saying, the starter home, things of that nature on up. Is you'd like to get some younger kids out here that, geez, I'd really like to see here.
Yep.
All right, I wanna grow up and pay the neighbor's house, I'm gonna move up.
So then remember, they could develop, what's originally developed back in the seventies. The first place that they actually started building was over in.
Which one? So in the actual goals of the draft, um, income is mentioned three times. And it's within a catchall of. Like provide high quality of life that is welcoming to all ages, backgrounds, abilities and income levels. Uh, services for residents of all ages, abilities and income levels. And household types and income levels ensuring welcome and accessible and socially economically diverse population. So we never, we never actually use the phrase low income in the goal base. Do we need to modify that wording to reflect it is what I think my question is?
That was my question. Instead of doing like low income, we look at something more economically advantaged housing. You know, basically.
We need to specify further down than what we have now. Is there a reason that we wanna get into not saying low income, but economically challenged or whatever? Need to do that?
Well, I I can tell you, one of the. Yeah, misinformation questions we had last night at the cityhood meeting was, we hear you're gonna put in low income housing in the village. Really? No, no, we we talked about like starter homes, but. But not not low income housing, you know, developments like you would need to voucher. That's what I think when I hear low income, because my wife is a social worker, I think. Section eight into vouchers, I think of that type of thing, so.
Since for me, when you say low income, I don't automatically think of poor people, I think of. Families that are just starting out, you know, a couple gets married and then they have a kid. I think of that more low income in the sense of neither one of them.
And you and you put a, you're saying a starter home.
Right.
I don't necessarily, when you say poor, but I I I'm not saying that either.
Okay.
But when you're saying a starter home. Whether you purchase it and you put it on a a foundation or a basement. And you put a well in and you put a septic in.
Yeah.
You're looking at a quarter billion dollars minimum.
Yeah.
So so what are you calling?
Yeah.
I mean.
I guess I look at it more starter family starter housing kind of stuff. I look at it as, you know, a just grad.
A starter house to some is not. You know.
A starter home is just a starter home.
Right.
So somebody moves in and has two kids and now they're looking someplace else to move to.
Right, but like.
Try to start at home and then they live there for thirty years too.
Some people don't.
Well, then my first house was around a thousand square foot and just my wife and I, I mean, twenty eight years, she made fifteen or seventeen a year. You know, we bought the house for fifty two thousand, that was back in nineteen ninety. But it was the idea that we knew what we could afford based on that lower income that we were making, you know, not poor people, but not. Neither one of us were making back then forty or fifteen thousand dollars a year.
Right.
But we were still able to afford a house. Now, interest rates at that time were ten percent. So when people kept telling me ten percent, that's great. And it just came out of the other stuff where it was twelve, fifteen percent. So that in my mind, that's what I think about when I think about the. Stuff like that.
Now, I remember prime rate nineteen eighty was twenty one.
So it was really, really high.
Prime rate, yeah. Mortgage were eighteen.
Yeah, so ten was good, I guess, for me.
All right, that's the highest they hit.
Yep.
Now you talk about a crash. People were buying it because the prices went down. People were still buying it with the idea that rates would go down and they kept refinancing it. They gotta help them buy on, excuse my language, on on the price. But now they gained it and the rates went down. All right? But that happened in nineteen eighty one. Basically, everybody in Michigan turned the last last one, turned the lights out. Right? But I think it's, once we get a feedback, if we go, uh, sorry, second. Get off the point here, I've been sorry.
I don't know what we're discussing at this point.
Getting feedback from um builders or realtors to find out what the call is. Then we can better respond of what how to meet that need.
And and we would have to that locally, that's what we were. Um, like the information on the the housing statistics that we have as far as the world growth and stuff is. I think that's generalized, you know, uh, data, you know, or. Um, it it's not focused on our areas.
That's correct.
You know, uh, oh, the only way something like that would be beneficial to us. Far as our growth and and trying to cater to our future community. Uh, would be to have our area evaluated under those, you know, questions.
And then it would be the planning commission's responsibility to make sure that when we have those information, okay, how does our zoning match up for that stuff? How did their housing re- um, request or housing?
Where does it go?
We're not, where where did it go, but also when we decide where something's gonna go, we have to develop a plan and say, okay, we know. This isn't gonna be happening, that house is gonna be a fifty dollar house, so we gotta make sure that those areas are. Set up right in the planning, so they can do that stuff in the first place, right?
So so so. Here's a a thought for a while. You type into Google, what's the average starter home price in Michigan for a young couple or family? Approximately one fifty to three hundred, okay, that's a huge range, you know.
Well, I mean, that's what.
Yeah.
You you're looking at.
Yeah, very statewide, two twenty, uh.
Thousand square feet.
Hundred, hundred and fifty one thousand roughly makes the state third or fourth most affordable, but that next point there. In twenty twenty four, it was two fifty, it's two ninety one, that's a sixteen percent jump in a year in that price. What I'm thinking here is. That conversation with the realtors and the builders. What is their per square foot average cost out of? Out of, you know, a regular modest home, you're not putting in granite countertops and all that, like. A a regular first time home. What does that cost per square foot? And then how do we tie that back to our dwelling size requirements in the zoning organs of? Fifteen hundred or twelve hundred or a thousand or eight hundred, so now you have that number tied to that development code saying that. Yeah, we know the average price to build a home of this caliber, which, you know, a lot of them in the community are, because they were built as back homes in the two thousands. You know, is a hundred and eighty five dollars a square foot. While we know that that market range for us, we need to be under two hundred thousand. It it's, you know, you can back do the math and figure out what square footage you need to set for your minimum. To meet that market, that is my thought.
But are we trying, do you meet, do you try to do that in? The central Michigan area, or do you do it? In the Lake Isabella area? Because that that hundred and fifty to three hundred is a huge gap.
Huge gap.
That's, that's, and I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not pushing Wademan, but if you ended up and you could say like Wademan or Oil City.
Yeah.
To Lake Isabella with the lake. That's where that big difference is.
Well, you've got the, you've got that data in the TMA of what demographic groups are moving into your community, you know, so you can. You can see clearly that you're attracting, you know, people in this type of economic range. You you put your development requirements, you know, to match that, not above it, is what I'm getting at.
I know what I, last year when I was shopping around for some stuff, I looked at modular homes, not whole home, modular home. Cheap is one they had at Clark's, was a hundred and thirty one thousand, that was a two bedroom. House, I wanna say it was around a thousand, a little bit over, but that was just for the house. Still have to do the, you still have to do, like you said, the, you know, septic field, a little tank, and I mean, there's still another fifty, seventy five thousand hours. Easy.
Yeah.
That you have to do on top of buying the lap, but you're gonna put it in all that stuff as well too, so. Um, that hundred and fifty to me just sounds.
We need to.
That's low as far as a a brand new, you know, spare house, hundred and thirty thousand dollars is is probably quite low. You know, um. But I don't know if, you know, they're they're talking, you know. What what, how did you word the questioning? So what was the average price of the first time home buyer with?
Three hundred right here, as I said, statewide. Uh, one fifty.
Right, and that that that's for a first, you know, their their first one that they're purchasing. That that's not speculating that that's a a brand new, yeah, newly built house.
Yep.
I just bought my house uh two years ago, just over two years ago, I think I gave a hundred and twenty seven thousand for it.
Yep.
Um, which was a steal, you know. Um, you know, so I'm I'm well up to that hundred and fifty that we're all saying is low.
Yeah.
You know, um, I didn't have to mortgage, I sold my house, I bought this one, you know. So, you know, I I think it's kind of semantics, because tha- that's what people are paying for their first homes. It's not having built. You know, it's not specifying that this is what, you know, it's costing to build. You know, a home, and and that's not why we, like I said, I'm under that mark. I just bought a place here in Lake Isabella within the last two years for under a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. All it, you know, do, and it has a garage.
When you take a married couple, both graduated college, whatever, let's say they're making forty fifty thousand now to here each. A hundred thousand dollars in income, what kind of housing can they afford? You know, buy a pre-made or building a house, either one.
Right, and that's that, that's very widely, you know, that's just if we're talking about low income. That's what is very widely, you know, um, that's not something we can just, you know, this is X, this is what we're talking about. Um, we 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 could talk circles around this for for months until we until we have a specified, you know. Income level or family household, you know.
And then availability, what houses on market?
Well, absolutely.
Plus, it's gonna be two hundred thousand on up. In most areas, not all, but in most areas, they start around two and a grand. Midland's even higher. Turned out my grandson buy, uh, he's a Bay City cop, uh, house in Midland. And every realtor that we have talked to already have seven clients. On their list, so when that house comes up, it never hits them.
Right.
It never hits the third person on their list.
So since we're trying to push development, the big thing we have is the lake.
Right.
The whole thing is we should be looking at catering around the lake. Should we revisit? The uh weekend rentals, the the those type of things, because that would spur development.
Uh, I would, I would strongly counter that with saying, once you start to allow short term rentals, you're gonna see inflated home prices.
Yes, absolutely, but then your investments that are producing revenue that, you know.
That would attract more development.
Uh, it would, but if not, so, you know.
Or accessory unit that is long term. It's still a rental, but it's a year.
Yeah, but that's not.
So. I I had this conversation with someone who was interested in in buying a property here and turning it into a short term rental, and one of the reasons why we do not allow that in this communities. The first and most pressing is access to the lake is through a private organization.
Right.
That if you you bring in, you know, tenants or whatever that are there on a short term basis, they're not. They're using the lake in a disproportionate manner than the rest of the users in the community at that property.
And not having to pay for it.
Second and more importantly.
They're they're, that or they're paying for it through.
Yeah.
Through the person that's running on the house.
We have to make an agreement with like, oh, maybe we need to. We have to make an agreement with Lipo, maybe we need to reorganize.
Luck getting that.
It's not gonna happen.
You said that with a straight face, congratulations.
Wave money, wave money.
Second, and this is, this is, this is a dollar in sense for us. We have a tax cap in our village charter. Of one mil that is rolled back this year to zero point seven nine mil.
Wow.
We get more money based on residency than we do on property values to operate here. So every one of these homes that turns into a short term rental. That you do not have bodies being counted in your census that goes into your Act fifty one formula and your revenue sharing formula. Takes dollars out of our operating and street abilities because those people don't go into those factors from the state based on population. That's a huge problem for us.
Well, it's a conundrum, then they say, because how many people are really wanting to move in here? Working in Mount Pleasant, we got the school issue. What is the big, if if you can't, if you can't, the lake is, if you're not really counting the lake that much, what is the? Whole point in somebody moving in out here?
It's the lake.
What? The lake is the only thing.
Uh, Lapola's membership, we we just brought those, how many, how many people, uh, I know it was down, but there, we were holding number.
Just under a thousand.
Right, so there are a thousand members of Lapola. Of our community.
Members.
Right, which are the only ones other than lakefront property owners. How many lakefront properties are there approximately?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. We have twenty three hundred parcel, give or take.
Right, i- i- you know, and and so what I'm getting at is the lakefront property owners have access to the lake and Lapola members have access to the lake. I don't think there are, but let's say there are a thousand, lo- you know. People that are living here that have lake access property, lakefront property. That's two thousand people.
I'd say it's probably. Six hundred would be it.
Right. I'm going, I'm going, I'm going big though.
Yeah.
Six hundred, let's say a thousand. Lakefront properties, a thousand members of Lapola. Those are the people that are utilizing the lake that are currently parts of our community. What is our current? Number of residents here?
According to the census, one thousand eight hundred and twenty nine.
Over eighty hundred.
Yeah.
The memberships are on a household basis. And again, we have just over a thousand homes, so you think, great, everyone's a member.
Yeah.
But we have twenty three hundred parcels.
Right.
So, really. Forty two percent of the community are dues paying members of the association.
Right, that's that's what I'm.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Yes, that that's the point that I was trying to make. I didn't have the numbers off the top of my head. So to say definitively that the lake is all that we have to offer. Is not necessarily true.
It's to me the tractor, I think.
On the, I I I. In your, in your opinion, I I I I accept that in your opinion. But the numbers that we just talked about, which are simple facts. Only forty two percent of our community. Is is utilizing access to the lake. Then then what, what else is there? Tell me what.
I don't have that answer. I I. You know.
I can tell you, I can only say from my perspective, that's what brought me here. Closer to where my grandkids are. Um, I came out here looking, because it's it's a nice looking community, I I could give. Two cents for the lake. I honestly haven't sat sat foot. Probably more than a hundred feet away from the lake.
It's the options.
Well, absolutely.
But you have lake options, golf options. Lower tax mileage rates than than surrounding areas. Yeah, it's thirteen miles, but that's not out of line for shopping and healthcare and all that.
No, not rural, central.
So what, when you're looking at what we have, we have. A myriad of benefits that you gotta sell. Yes, we have a lake, we have a golf course, but we are close to shopping. We have low taxation. We have a very good. Good community here. That's what you try to sell.
Yeah, that's what attracted me. It was not the lake, it was not the golf course. I'm just speaking out my own experience and.
It's also country living, or it's city. You know, when I first started working at CMU, I've always wanted to live on the water, so I'd take my lunch hour and drive over here to Canadian lakes, looking for a house. On the water, that's what I purposely wanted.
Well, there are gonna be a lot of variables as far as getting.
I'm here for the water.
I'm here for the water, yeah. I'm I'm here for, I'm here for the job. I've been here many. The village manager for twenty one years.
Yep.
You know how many times I've been on a boat on the lake? Three.
And it wasn't your own.
Twenty one years I've lived here. I don't boat, I don't fish. I have a pool. I don't use the lake. I love the lake. It's great.
So you're here for the job. There's two employees.
Yeah.
We got three lakes.
Yeah, I I love, I love the lake, don't get me wrong, but if I didn't work here, I would live here.
I had a house on a lake, I wanted to be closer to Mount Pleasant, okay, so I liked the lake. My kids, my kids and grandkids, five grand, they're all living in Mount Pleasant. Being at Houghton Lake, that was an hour away. They didn't have the chance with my kids and the grandkids' work and school schedules and all that. Even an hour away made it hard for them to come up for a weekend.
For the lake.
For the lake, yeah.
Yeah.
But that was at Houghton, okay? When I wanted to retire, I looked at Houghton. Houghton is collapsing. We have been up there.
Yeah.
I went around the last. Took my daughters up there, there's a tiki bar that, um, get off at the side. They were closed on Tuesday. So I went to the Spicor. Bar, which, uh, restaurant, which has been open forever, close to my uh, my place on the lake, closed. Okay, went down, we have to go to the Argonaut, the tip up town. Okay, bar's closed. Arnie's that had that big craft center that took up a whole block, closed bacon up for sale.
Mine's are still here.
That area is collapsing.
It is.
All right, yes, this isn't, no, because of proximity to my grandkids, we love it here. So, yeah, the lake brought me here, but it's also the proximity. Why I didn't want up there to retire, the access to healthcare.
Location, location, location.
Yeah. All right. All right, I didn't want that. This is what we could have here. You could have a better rural lake life, you could have all the stuff you want. You wanna travel, you wanna be here and be a snowbird, that's fine. It's a safe community. You can come back and enjoy the summer and be somewhere else. Has a lot of amenities to offer.
But the key is the lake. You didn't move to there. You didn't move.
Yeah.
Someplace like that, you moved to the lake.
Well, that was, that was, that's why he moved here.
That's why I moved here.
There was the reason why I I did it. I was looking for that. I looked at Canadian lakes.
I moved from.
I didn't like their overhead. I didn't like their rules and regulations and all the other crap that went with it, all right? The requirement that I had to spend so much money at the castle every month, that after six o'clock on every lake, it is no wake. So if you're across the lake, you gotta inch your way back. Every Thursday is no wake. All right? That turned me off right there. Okay, not that I terrorized the lake, but I don't wanna be out fishing with my kids or out doing something else, and now I'm across the lake and I gotta. I gotta idle all the way home. All right?
Tim, what do we need to do now? Where where are we at?
So where we at is, um, because we do need to wrap this up and talk about one other item tonight, um. Do you wanna see any changes to this draft? Before it goes out for a comment period, or do you wanna push out the comment period and and work on changes in the interim? The the shot clock that we are on is the council has to have this approved by March, and that's tied to the grant we got from the state. So, um, you know, right now, if you were to. Send it out to them and they did their public hearing, you know, let it out for comment. You wouldn't have a hearing again until December on it, so you would have additional months to. To have additional discussions, potentially make updates and changes to that draft. You could wait another month if there are specific things you want added, changed. Um, then I can bring that back to you to review then. Um, it's entirely your prerogative at this point in time, but you guys need to kick it out to the council within this meeting or next.
I'm pretty happy with the way it reads right now. This is my third time going through a master plan, but. Knowing with the amount of time, the master plan, and the lake and black was better word, is our Bible. Our master plan is the way we're supposed to look. And do and be guided by that, other than anything else over the years. So to me, Tim's done such a wonderful job on it, it's hard to not pick it apart here and there, doing that kind of stuff, but. Based on the first one I went through versus what we see now, it's it's mighty the difference, so. Um, I'm pretty happy I couldn't, with everything I read through, that it really isn't anything I wanted to make any major changes to. Um.
No, um, and if you go through that picking, you can find all the other versions.
Sure, yeah.
The what Tim just had up there, we were talking about low income, so he brought up every time. And right there, for example. If you wanna be nitpicky, you know, uh, under residential and neighborhood goals, providing diverse range of quality housing options to serve residents of all ages. Backgrounds, household types and income levels. Now, that all will carry through because of the commas, you know? So, um, to say that we are going to provide, you know, uh, quality housing options for all income levels, that's a false statement. We pu- we can't possibly say that or do that.
Right.
You know, because if somebody's only making fifteen thousand dollars a year. You know, um, they can't necessarily afford a home here, and that's based on what, just what the homes are selling for.
Something like that. You know, you could just wordsmith it to. Provide a diverse range of quality housing options, ensuring the community is well being accessible to a socially economically diverse population.
Yeah, there you go, you know, and and I wasn't trying to point out, but what I'm saying is, if you if you go through with a magnifying glass, you, you know.
But that, because in that study, it 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 addressed low income.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted, I wanna bring that up in that study and say, well, wait a minute. I I don't wanna adopt that study because of of that.
And the thing is, the the master plan is a master plan, but it'll not set the stuff. Ten years ago, the kind of stuff that we thought, you know, extra big garages or garages across the street.
Absolutely. I think ten years from now, it's gonna be different.
Yeah, ten, now, ten years later, we want, love that kind of stuff.
So I think with that, you know, I'm happy with it.
So the first one. Uh, preserve and enhance small town charm while fostering a high quality of life that is welcoming to all people.
Yeah.
And then the middle one. Global community services and facilities. Uh, facilities. And they're right there. Provide equitable access to high quality global community services and facilities.
When I mentioned them.
Yeah, no, it it really, it was good to be mentioned in there because. You know.
I agree.
You know, un- unless, unless a large part of our community was low income housing, then that would be something we would wanna be, you know.
So I said to that, because in my, in my previous employment. You you say something like that, then the Federal Reserve will come in and just rip us apart, because we did not offer something just one H bracket.
Right, right, and that's why I say, that's my saying.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. All right, the state and the federal would come in and say, you're gonna, you put a branch here, okay? It's on the west side of this county. You didn't serve the entire county, and the east side is all this law and all. You gotta, now you gotta open up the whole county and all the low income. And you didn't want to do that. So I'm very sensitive to. The language.
Where is US twenty seven?
US one twenty seven?
No, you got US twenty seven up there.
It used to be called. Let me change it to one forty seven and.
Okay.
Anywhere?
Or, oh, no. I'm going like M twenty.
No, US one, I, yeah. Yeah, forever it was, it was after I moved here.
Yeah.
So it was probably two thousand and six, that range, because I remember. I hate giving this, a memory about this, but, um. There was an article in the Morning Sun written by, I believe, Mark Razzemberger.
Oh, wow, okay.
Who, back then, they had this thing called Sound Off.
Yep.
Yeah. And this was starting when the the economy was. Tanking, and someone called Sound Off and complained. The government's just wasting all this dang money because they're changing the freeway signs from US twenty seven to US one twenty seven and. Um. The the editor, they would just say Ed dash, and people wouldn't understand that that meant editors. They thought there was someone there named Ed that would respond. Say it said, no, this was money from the federal government. It was part of uh, re-numering the US highway system. Because there was a different US twenty seven in wherever, yada, 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 so. Um. Yeah, it used to be US twenty seven.
I grew up knowing it was twenty seven.
Call it twenty seven.
I had the hardest time in the world, changing the one twenty seven.
Yeah, you you guys, with those changes, um, you could recommend it to the council so they can then hopefully.
Do we accept it with a?
Yeah, with the change. Your motion to that extent? Everybody seconded it?
Yeah, to get seconded?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. The ayes have it.
Thank you for that.
I'm worn out.
Great stuff. So. Really, you just have some homework, I think is the next item. Uh, we received a call. Uh, last week, uh, from a resident who is interested in doing. Uh, a cottage food business at her property. She looks for, looking for the initial income. Um, went through our home occupation regulations, and really the hang up for us is right now, we say you can't have. Just walk up retail traffic for a home occupation. Um. Michigan has a a law, the cottage food law, um, that allows you to make a certain. Range of products, um. I think nothing with dairy, you know, no cheeses. Um, you can do bread, you can do that kind of stuff, jams, funeese, um. And then you can sell them, um, and have revenue of twenty five thousand dollars annually without having to go through the. Uh, Michigan Department of Agriculture, I think it is for your, your licensing and that kind of stuff. But you do have to meet local zoning. So in your package, you've got that one pager from the state. Um, you've got three examples that I know of locally, two of them are on on the board. Uh, the one on the left is from the Coldwater Lake area. It's a little shed that, um. They'll open the door and you've got baked goods in there. Uh, the next one is over on Beale City Road, um, so if you are. Taking your children to Beale City Schools and you go down Little Field and then head towards Beale City. Uh, that is, uh, just about a half mile or so to the west of the school. Uh, before you get to, isn't that Gilmore Road, whatever that dirt road there is, but. Um, and then there's one, if you travel Old Mission. Original old twenty seven. Uh, from Mount Pleasant to Shepherd. Uh, where the dog kennel club is at, across the street from that is the other one, that I've done more. I'm sure there's some other ones, but. All these are are basically just allowing people to sell. You know, baked goods or stuff that they locally make on their property, whether it's gardening, whatever. Um. In in thinking of how that could be, you know, something that could work here. Um, I think a s- you know, a a cart or a a small cabinet size type thing would make a ton of sense. Um, putting a shed in your front yard, I think might be a little bit of a stretch, um, but. Um, I'd like you guys to look at it. I'd like to have a discussion at our next meeting about should we. You know, soften some of that language in our home occupation regulations to be permissive towards. You know, some type of operation in this nature, um, or not. Um, but the request came in. Um, I told the individual I would be happy to present it to the planning commission. Said, you'll help me get this passed. I said, nope, I will help present it. Um, it's not my job to sell it one way or the other. Um, I can certainly see the merits in some things and and some of the examples saying, you know, it might not be a good fit, um. You know, put the whole shed out in your yard, um. But. Um, you know, something out there, if we think of ways for people. Do, you know, earn revenue from their property that isn't a short term rental. This is an option.
I picked it, the shed's right here for Van, on Van Der Sis.
Yeah.
Lot right here in some local division there. Just didn't sit well with me, and I think it's because it was a shed, for sure. If it were just a table. With pork on the cob and tomatoes and cucumbers and stuff like that, that doesn't bother me. But the idea of a a shed, like the one we have right here, in in a residential area, what bothers?
Well, what's our, what's our current setbacks for sheds?
Non waterfront is twice the district setback and otherwise is district setback.
Okay.
Pretty much not.
Right, so that, so I mean, that's that's a non issue really, you know?
Yeah, and that's why, um. You know, I'll just kind of focus in on these, these two here, you know, something like that, that it is.
Well, even even that lower one can be considered a shed. The cart, yes, that's movable, it's not, uh, you know, I mean, obviously that little building is movable, but that that could easily be, you know, considered a shed versus.
What if somebody put a eight foot? Table like that out there with a pop-up tent over the top of it, and so good.
Well, that's no different than a yardset.
But that's why I ask.
So they can leave the table out there and the thing for the whole time.
Put it out there all summer long and it's neighbor. Put it out there all summer long and its neighbor.
It's like the cart, you could do the cart and just push it into your yard.
Sure.
I know that, the cart, the cart there.
Yeah.
Always accepted winner, I think they take it in the winter. Yeah.
Thinking the people, they 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 close the doors and they open it in the morning.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like a lot of things that some of my neighbors do, but that's not my say.
Okay.
You know, I mean, and that's how I truly I feel, um, I I've said this many, many times, I I'm very cautious with working with zoning. Because I, as an individual, wanna be able to do on my property what I wanna be able to do, as long as I'm not infringing on or encroaching on others' rights and stuff.
Yeah.
So that being said, I have to respect my neighbor's ability to do the same.
But I look at it as if it's any put table with a tent over the top of it, up nine months out of the year.
Well.
Next door to me.
We, we have anything, we have anything in our zoning about yard sales?
Yeah, we do.
But yard sale, we don't allow yard sales year round.
Hmm.
We've already had people get in trouble and get tickets for doing that stuff, so there is a limitation on that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that that would be no different than a yard sale, and it should be held to the same criteria. It doesn't matter what you're selling, if you're having a sale in your yard.
Right.
Whatever we have in zoning should equate to, it doesn't matter if it's food goods, uh, you know, flowers that you grew in your garden.
I'm getting at the looks of it, and I'm going cheap, thinking I just want an eight foot table out there with a tent over the top of it.
Right.
For nine months a year, are you okay with that, and so, I'm not.
It is not.
Those I don't have yet, when he showed me there, because it's these of us, but I'm thinking, not everybody's gonna have a thousand dollars to make that.
Right.
Brand.
Oh, that's.
They're gonna get away with.
Well, they gave one of the.
Can of worms when you're putting.
They'll end up.
Yeah, but maybe.
Well, they can't, or something already prohibits that.
Well, they're asking for a change, right?
Well, no, they're asking for us to consider allowing the sales, you know, the 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 structure of what you're selling from, uh, is it.
Well, no, that's, that's probably.
Yeah, that would come later, you know.
And it's got to be more permanent than if it's just something that they allow.
We do not, do not allow the the sale of food like that, and, uh, the.
Right, unless you make a, but the.
Put it away. That's all remembered.
Well, certainly, Reynolds, so.
You need hours.
For the horse, we have to decide whatever. I don't say that because, I'm just.
You have to worry about.
I'm very orientated, focused, um, you know, and that's why.
Getting a grass, getting up there, eating the grass, and you know, that kind of stuff.
And my brain just goes, oh my god, what are we doing, you know?
Kids.
Yeah, I'm not loving the idea, I'm not objecting to it, but I'm not loving the idea of it either, so, especially in the residential area, one thing of it out here in the commercial area, that's. That's to me is a whole different line.
I don't want, well.
We, when you, when you're talking about this stuff, what she wants to do with that her house in a residential neighborhood. To me, that's more like, oh, oh, I don't, we waiting for the problem kind of thing, versus them for three here on Coldwater Road, like the one of Van Der Sis and all that, and I'm.
Yeah, you know, this, you know, you know, this is gonna be very similar to the bees and chickens thing, though, Jeff. We're gonna, we're gonna have people up here, up in arms over it, they have no interest in it. They just don't like the idea that they can't be, that they're being told, no, they can't, or you, you know.
But you have to consider your neighbors, we are his own community.
Absolutely.
One year, one year, that doesn't mean that you have to.
Absolutely.
Thing, so, that's what I go back to as well, we're his own community, everyone, everybody wants, counts more than one person lives, so.
You know, we may have actually taken out those regulations, now that I'm going through, yeah.
Oh, the yard sales?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I didn't see anything, and I'll, I'll be honest, I haven't read it through word for word, there's a lot of information there, and that's why I asked him, I, I, I have gone through it a number of times, but.
We had people who were doing, they were almost year round.
Right, yeah.
And that's part of why it was in there.
Right.
Not a.
Yeah, and in my mind, though, going forward, if we do decide to do that, I think it should be held to the same criteria that we would for a yard sale or any other kind of sale out of your yard.
Yes, really, you gotta, you bet, you have something to compare to, we're talking about definitely so.
So next week, we're gonna revisit.
Next month.
Or whatever. Next month, yes.
Yeah.
Next month. Okay, anything else? We got, um, cover out of the cottage food business or anything like that?
That's what we're discussing now, yeah.
Okay, so we're out to public comments? Public?
Um, I've got nothing about any of that.
I was open to whatever you wanna say.
Yeah, it's about the airport.
Okay.
Um, wondering what exactly is going on there? Um. I'm one of the few pilots there, bought a hangar there a year ago. And, um. One thing that bothers me is that there's all these hangars that are just for both the camper storage.
Mm hmm.
I've always kept my plane at Claire. There, everything has to be. Air, something to do with aircraft.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Aviation Jason.
Right. Um, I did have a car parked in my hangar there at one time. They told me had to move it out.
Mm hmm.
Which wasn't any big.
Who was, who was they?
Uh.
Claire.
Yes, Claire.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about down here, so, okay.
So, um. I'm just reading up on it about. Things could change there after the end of the year.
Mm hmm.
I'm just concerned about me having two airplanes there that I have to get rid of because. I'm not gonna have a runway to take off the land anymore. And personally, I would like to, to see the airport grow. Um. I do have another lot there next to my hangar, which I was thinking about putting another hangar out there. Um, possibly. Possibly to run it out to an AMP that, cause there isn't very many of them around to, uh, do annual inspections on airplanes and stuff. Um.
Have you met or talked to any of the people who are on the, the, the Lake to Develop Airport Board over there, Tom Corsair and who else is out there?
Uh, Bob Rowl, maybe, Al Davis.
Okay, some of the other people that are involved in that. Association, um, are the ones that the village is trying to be working with, and did the quick history is that. Part of where we're going at possibly ending support for the airport is the cost. Over the years, originally when that airport was set up, it's supposed to be no cost for the village, but the association, they would pay everything, well. That ended up not happening so much, where the village ended up taking over for the insurance. Plowing the runways, cutting the grass, you know, maintaining the lights and doing all that stuff, and it's gotten up to around four thousand a year from, right, money wise, so. And that's where, with the state of Michigan, anytime we did improvements to the airport. We were automatically obligated for the next twenty years to carry that airport. So we are at now a point where we're getting to the twenty years, we haven't made any of the improvements on that, and the village council thought is. This is money that we don't need to be spending, and so that's why the conversation of the right now is that. The village council, the village is gonna stop paying all that stuff, it's up to them at this point to start taking over all those costs again to maintain that. And I don't, I'm not gonna speak for any of them, that's why I was asking if you knew or met Tom Corsair and any of the people over there who are currently on that association and work with them.
Didn't realize that there was an association.
It's, it's.
It's in your bill.
You know, um, but I mean, we have people that we meet with, um, Tom Corsair used to serve on the planning commission.
What hangar is yours, can I ask? Um, it's at, uh, ten fourteen Campbell. Okay. And so Tom is the. He's next door. He's next door to it, yeah. Yeah, TS Flyers LLC, it's his name, it's a thousand eight. He's our official airport manager, um, and. Uh, the last conversation that we had with Tom was back in. May, uh, cause he works all summer, he drives, uh, and delivers fertilizer for like Star of the West Mills, that kind of stuff. Um, but we had a conversation with previous him that, you know, our grant obligations to maintain the facility and at the end of this calendar year. And we would certainly be open to some type of transfer of ownership to move that facility into. Either an LLC or the the property owners association there so that it can maintain an airport, but the village as a whole isn't the one financially supporting it any longer. Um, so, we we would certainly love to to see that option, um, Tom said he would be back in touch once, uh, harvest season was over, so. I would hope soon, uh, I saw Al Davis today. Who has a hangar on the other side of the lake and asked him, are you still flying, he goes, well. I gotta finish the wife's motorhome, and then I've got two projects in there that are both planes, you know, so.
Not in time, too.
But, yeah, so that, that's, that's really where things are at with that, um. But our our official obligation through the last grant we received, that twenty year obligation ends December thirty first of this year. So, I mean, we certainly would be open to a solution to keep it, you know, open and and maintained in a way that, you know, we're not subsidizing it essentially, so.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I'm not against the airport, I like it there, I hope it will grow over the years too, and. Wanted to see if we could find a mechanic, they could have a shop there, they could fly in and do stuff they used to have.
Yeah.
Fly in, go in time, people coming in for Saturday breakfast and that kind of stuff too, so, I'm all for it, I just don't want the village to have to pay for it, it wasn't the original plan in the first place, so.
Yeah.
And I think that's the popular, uh, stance that I've heard, uh, in our multiple discussions about the airport, that's how most. People feel is that, you know, it's great, it's a great option to have and stuff, we just don't want it to be, you know, a a village. You know, finance, uh, when it's not really, you know, utilized by the village and the.
So it was historically privately owned, and it came into village ownership. Um. Sure, you, you've flown out of Detroit through McNamara Terminal. Ed McNamara used to be a resident here, and he was mayor downstate and then on M dot Eric Nautics Board. And Mr. McNamara had a relationship with our pilot community that allowed us to get a grant to pave the runway. The condition is it had to be publicly owned to do so, so the the private ownership at the time deeded it over to us so that it could get grant money to pave the runway. And that goes back to the, the village will never have to pay for the facility, we just need it for paving the runway, and. You know, that was nineteen ninety eight.
And it's, it's gotten expensive over the years, I think that pretty much drove. The whole idea of the council saying we need to walk away from this because of the expenses that keep going up.
It it's expensive when you have a tax cap of less than one mil.
Right.
You know, that that's really the thing, if we had, you know. Well, a much. Funds. You know, five thousands a drop in the bucket, but five thousands more than we pay to do lake patrols with the sheriff's carpet on the lake.
Right.
You know, so.
So I would encourage you at this point, talk to one and talk to Tom Corsair, you know, get some ideas on on that, on that side, and hopefully we hear back from them before the end of the year here.
Yeah, cause I think we'd all very much like to see a solution where that would revert back to private ownership and maintain, you know, an operational facility, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, sure, if that's what you wanted to hear, but that's the truth of where everybody's at here. Yeah, just reading on the thing about.
Turning it into pickleball courts and stuff like that. Well, I already have one.
Yeah.
Big pickleball court. Uh, anything else? I'm good?
Yeah.
Uh, member comments, we got anything around the table?
I just have one announcement, um, in case you got it hidden in the herd yet, the annual, um. County Fairgrounds this Saturday from eight AM to twelve PM, you can take hazardous waste. Hmm. And electronic waste to them and drop it off for free, so from eight AM to twelve PM at the county fairgrounds, you're going down the. South end on baseline, turn in and go up there and they'll have it there, they usually have two separate Saturdays, but it's here, they combined it into one. But so I'm gonna be piling up a lot of stuff with my cheap and old computer stuff I've collected over the years, so, but I just wanted you guys to know about it.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I guess we're adjourned, there's anything else?
I could use it.